All right, I'll call us back into order from our recess. Welcome back. Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to the agenda this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Well, that's good. All right, tonight for our proclamations and recognitions, we have one proclamation and two recognitions. First, we have a proclamation designating the month of July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month. And Councilwoman Lee Powers is going to read the proclamation as she serves on the Parks and Rec Board. Oh, and Mr. David Akerd, the third, is chairman of the commission who is here to accept the proclamation, as well as Mr. Terry Napier, Director of Parks and Recreation, is also here. So, we appreciate all of you.
Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Bristol, Tennessee, whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation Areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, Margaret Fire Robin, does hereby proclaim July 29th as, July 2019, as Park and Recreation Month. This is the ninth day of July 2019.
And, Mr. Akerd, would you like to say a few words about your board and Parks and Rec Month? I don't think you're ever short for words, even if you're not prepared.
I'm not, but these are public comments, so they can be printed in the paper. No, seriously, thank you, and we have a really good time on the Parks and Rec Board. And I think some of the things that you'll see throughout the city, even the Instagram page, is highlighting a park every Tuesday and everything, and so, because we have so many parks. But of course, our largest one is Stills Creek Park. And I think if you've seen the last few years, what's transformed out there, especially with the partnership with Friends of Still Creek. And I know, Margaret, you're very involved in that. Building the new nature center, completing that, and really, I think, from what we've heard from everybody, the park looks about as best as it's looked in years, and everything. And Terry Napier is just a wizard with what he can do on a limited budget, limited staff, and what he keeps everything going on here for us to be able to use. The parks are for the citizens of Bristol or neighboring cities, and everybody comes and uses them. And so, I just tell you to get out and use them, and to go join them, and look at them, and take care of them. No, we want to take care of them and keep them looking as beautiful as they are. We're working on a new dog park, I think I can say that out loud, and everything. We've got some funding and been able to do that, so that'll be our second dog park, and everything. So, we're always out there trying to do stuff, and if anybody has any ideas, please reach out to any of your council members and let them know. Mr. Luttrell, the new, one of our new council members, was on the committee also for the last couple of years, and it's a good committee, and just appreciate it. Thank you, Margaret and council.
Thank you. Next, we're pleased to have Bristol Traffic Safety Ambassador recognition. It's the student winner of this year's Traffic Safety Ambassador Award Program. We have Major Matt Austin, Officer Nathan Green, who are here to introduce this year's winner.
And again, thank you. It is my honor to be able to highlight our traffic safety here in the city. Again, we enjoy a very safe roadways here in Bristol, we are, because of the strong partnership that we have. And again, we take the approach on traffic safety with the three Es, and we look at the three Es as engineering, education, and enforcement, and putting the things to put all three of those entities together into a program to create safer roadways. We have one of the safest communities in roadways across the state that we get recognition across the state because of the traffic safety program. And tonight, I'm honored to do, one of our strongest educational programs that we do is the Traffic Safety Ambassador. We look at that, again, as trying to put a local face on traffic safety. We look, because, again, sometimes we kind of, everybody knows the national campaigns and the things that happen throughout nationally, the click-it and tick-it and all of that, but what we want to do is make it personal. And I think the success that we have in partnering with our community is because of that personal touch. And each year, again, this program, we take the youngest, newest drivers to come up with a slogan, or we bring out the thoughts of traffic safety to make sure that it's on the forefront of everybody's mind every day when they go out to take, get behind the wheel and drive, to all of those things. And we take that, with that is to make sure, and they work and their families, and they come up with slogans, and then we judge them again. So, it's a program that kind of takes from our newest and youngest drivers to our most experienced drivers and the seniors, that we put that local face that all year that we do to come up with a thing. This year's, and again, even more poignant with the new laws this year, this year, the winner, there was over 34, I think, close to 40 entries this year, we used from the, from our middle school that comes out. And this year, what it says is, "Honk if you love Jesus; text if you want to meet him." And again, if you look at that again with how it works with the new law of texting and driving, it really kind of brings home the message of how dangerous it is to be texting and driving. So, I am pleased and an honor to introduce to you, Laney Richardson is our winner this year. Thank you all very much.
We appreciate this opportunity for working with the young people in our community. All right, next, we have a Bristol First Award. The city has over 340 full-time and part-time employees that serve our community on a daily basis. And we frequently hear of employees going above and beyond in their service. And the Bristol First program was created to recognize these efforts by our employees. Tonight, we honor our latest recipient of the Bristol First Award, and Ms. Terry Talbert is Director of Community Relations, is here to give a brief overview and talk about the recipient.
Thank you, Mayor Fire Robin, City Council, Mr. Sora. It's an honor every time I get up here and recognize a different city employee. It is absolutely amazing when you read the stories that come in every month, and it's not just one, there's multiples, and it's just the most refreshing thing, it makes your day, some days. This lady not only was nominated once, but twice, in the same period for the Bristol First Award, by two different people, for two different actions, and in two different parts of the city. To say the least, she's a pretty amazing person. The first nomination came from Ms. Patty Lee, who was trying to load her groceries into her car with some difficulty one evening, when her honoree noticed and stepped in to help, loading the groceries and seeing the lady on her way. And this was after a very long day at the Office of Public Works. She had been trimming shrubs, mowing grass, weed eating in the hot sun, but yet she saw someone in need and stepped to the plate. There is always that one person, either in your life, in your workplace, or in your place of worship, that always stands heads above everyone else in the crowd, not because of anything other than just being who they are, the way they go about their day, the way they treat the people around them. They are the people who, when others describe them, use words like these: considerate, responsible, self-motivated, all-around nice person, positive, and motivational. All these words and more could describe our June 1st honoree. The next referral was from a resident who saw the nominee in action twice. There's a lot of twos in here. Ms. Nancy DeFries wrote in her nomination form the following: "I observed Janet Ross working on an overgrown shrubbery problem on the street close to where I live. I stopped as I noticed Janet was taking the time to show the two women that she had with her how to properly do the job of cutting trees and shrubs. The women seemed to have such respect for Janet, and were carefully observing and working with her. This area had been a problem for the overgrown trees and shrubs, and had been difficult at times to maneuver. After stopping and talking with Janet, she said I could see that she had a real concern. The very next day, I happened to be in the same area again, and there was Janet, with better equipment, cutting even more the shrubbery, so two cars could pass easily without any problem. This time, she was personally doing the work herself, which was not that easy because of thick growth. This woman needs to be recognized, as she has shown true leadership ability. May she be recognized in the future in higher job opportunities and not forgotten when a position is open. Janet Ross, our June Bristol First Award recipient, would you please come forward with your family and accept your trophy from Mayor Fire Robin?"
While they're taking their pictures, I'll tell you that I observed Janet, just as Mrs. DeFries did, and she worked diligently. It was a large stand of bamboo that took several days to remove, and I've seen her throughout the city, working with her crew, and she does a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Congratulations. We also appreciate the role model you provide to the young people in our community, particularly the young girls and the women, for doing a job that's traditionally been seen for males, and it's great to have that example out there. We have no presentations on our agenda, so we have one public hearing. And this is for Ordinance 1904, Amending the Zoning Map of Bristol, Tennessee, by Designating Property 1101 Anderson Street as RE, Established Residential Neighborhood. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public as we open our public hearing?
Sure, I'd be glad to. As you mentioned, later this evening, City Council will be considering Ordinance 1904 on second reading. This ordinance amends the zoning map for the city of Bristol, Tennessee, to address a proposed rezoning of property addressed at 1101 Anderson Street. The current zoning is B1B, which is neighborhood shopping and office zone. Staff received a request from Appalachian Services Project to rezone the property to RE, which is Established Residential Neighborhood. The company anticipates or plans to construct a single-family home on this piece of vacant property, and the setback restrictions with RE are much more lax than the B1B. And I think Ms. Young will detail that more specifically momentarily. This matter was presented to the Bristol Regional Planning Commission at their May 20th meeting, and they send forth unanimously a favorable recommendation. This was approved on first reading on June 4th, and this before your later season I mentioned earlier. I'm going to ask Ms. Young now to come to the podium. Shereth is our Planning Services Manager, she's going to provide further detail of the issue. This was presented to you in work session during your May work session.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Sora did an excellent job summarizing the requests and some of the details in his introduction. This shows a map of the area, and it shows the zoning of the property, the subject property for the rezoning, as well as the surrounding neighborhood. You'll see that it shows up as a pink-gray color on this map, but that includes the area around the subject parcel, which is shown in red, that is zoned B1B, or the neighborhood office/business zone. The remaining area, which is shown in yellow, shows the RE, or Established Residential Area. This chart summarizes the zoning and the existing land you surround. You can see the existing land you surround, the parcel, is residential, and there are a couple vacant parcels as well, that are zoned with the B1B, or Neighborhood Shopping Office Zone. Here's just a couple photos of the site. This is looking west on Anderson Street. The grassy lot here in the front of the picture is the subject parcel. This is turning around and looking east back down Anderson Street with the subject parcel on your left. And then this is facing the parcel, so this is standing in the middle of Anderson Street, looking right at the subject parcel. As Mr. Sora stated in his introduction, the RE zone does provide some lesser restrictions in terms of setbacks for developing property, especially developing residential property. You can see the middle column shows the B1B zoning setbacks, so they're 30 feet, front and rear yard setbacks, whereas the RE is five feet on the front and 30 in the rear. The side setbacks are a little less in the RE district as well. This chart is a little bit hard to read on the screen, but it details the permitted uses allowed in each zone. So, on the right, the RE zone does allow your traditional single-family or duplex dwellings. Some minimal other uses are allowed by a special use permit, including churches, daycare centers, swimming, golf, tennis clubs. As opposed to on the right, your B1B column allows some business uses that would be supportive of the neighborhood, so things like professional offices, healthcare uses, and some finance and insurance, and some limited trade uses are allowed in the B1B. This is an excerpt of the city's Future Land Use Plan. The yellow color, which is indicated where the red circle is, that's our subject parcel that's requested for rezoning. It indicates a low-density residential use on the Future Land Use Map, so this does match up with the Future Land Use Map for the city. Accompanying the Future Land Use Map are several policies, and we use those to help analyze a request and send a recommendation to Planning Commission, which then comes to the City Council. But two key elements within those policies is Policy 2, which says that we should be looking to protect the character of residential neighborhoods, and Policy 6, which encourages the development of underutilized land and building to capitalize on existing infrastructure and services. So, based on these policies, the Future Land Use Map, staff recommended So based on these policies, the future land use map, staff recommended a favorable recommendation to the Planning Commission, and at their meeting on May 20th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to City Council for this rezoning request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you need questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move on with our agenda, and we'll bring this back for voting on by council in just a few minutes. Next on our agenda is appearance of citizens. This provides opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter that's not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business. A response isn't likely most of the time, because if we don't know anything about it, but the city manager can look into it, report back to City Council, have staff meet to work on concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, not transferable to other individuals and groups. If we have them, are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. We have a sign-up sheet, and we do have one person, Shane Heron, who has signed up to speak, so if Shane is here to come forward, we welcome you, and if you will give your address for the recorded record, we'd appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Give your address as well.
Yeah, it's 205 Little Valley Drive. It's in Dogwood Acres, which is the area behind Mad Greek. And I'm actually here on behalf of several of those residents, and I have their signatures with me. For the past nine months or so, Holstein Brewing Company and Thunder Mountain Campground have been throwing bike rallies and Mudfest, all these heavy metal concerts. I don't have anything against heavy metal, but out of the 138 acres that they have on their property, for some reason, they have chosen to set their stage up 100 yards off of our, about off the corner of our neighborhood. And, I mean, the volume coming out of that place is so loud that Twin City Drive-In is losing half their business every time they throw a concert. You can hear it at Avoca Middle School, there's a, Avoca Elementary School is right across the street, there's a daycare center right behind the Mad Greek, and I have a video that I was going to play, but I'm not going to do it, because it is just laced with profanity. I mean, every third, fourth word, and we have small kids running around that neighborhood. So all we're asking right now is for them to choose another location on their property, because they have 138 acres to choose from. They won't even talk to us. I've tried calling down there, and their response was to call the police, so that they just don't seem to care.
Thank you for sharing your concern, and I know some of us have talked with you and share your concerns in figuring out how we can help, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to address council? All right. Seeing none, next on our agenda, we have appointments, and we have quite a few appointments, because several years ago, we, council determined and put in our rules that we would save June appointments till July, so that any new council members would have opportunity to choose some of the folks who are, they'll be serving with city business. So the first appointment we have is Beer Board. It has two appointments to fill two, and it gets a little complicated, so I'm going to be calling on Mr. Sora and possibly Ms. Kaiser to help us out. So there's two unexpired terms, one ends January 2020, and the other one is 2022. The candidate receiving the highest number of votes will serve the longer term of office. If it's a tie, it's going to be determined by a lot drawn by, does it have to be the mayor, or can Danielle draw? It has to be the mayor?
That's what our process has been, the mayor. It's not codified.
Just she's closer. Okay.
It's not that far down.
Okay, so you're going to have pieces of paper to draw or something, right?
We've got.
Already ready, okay. We're going to have several like this. A candidate has to receive at least three votes to confirm their appointment. The candidates are Jason Brewer and Miles Vance. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
They'll both be good.
Okay, so if y'all will, I'm going to make things easier. If y'all pass these down, and I'm only voting for one.
Put the envelope up properly. Keen votes for Jason Brewer and Miles Vance. Turner votes for Jason Brewer and Miles Vance. Luttrell votes for Jason Brewer and Miles Vance. Fire Robin votes for Miles Vance. And Powers votes for Jason Brewer and Miles Vance. So Miles Vance will have the longer term of January 31st, or that term will expire January 31st, 2022, and then Jason Brewer would have the unexpired term of office ending January 31st, 2020.
And just to clarify, they're both good candidates, just saves a little bit of time. All right, the next one, Better Property Board. The appointment serves a three-year term, ending June 30th, 2022. We have one candidate, George Knoll, who is here this evening. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I think George will do a fine job. He's had a great job on some property he owns, so he really cares about the community.
And I'll ditto that. The Fairmount Estates is just a beautiful project, and really appreciate what he and his wife have done to work with that, and that's in the Fairmount neighborhood, and we have a lot of properties that are addressed by the Property Board in that neighborhood as well, so. Mark your ballots and pass them down. They're ahead of me.
Keen votes for George Knoll. Luttrell votes for George Knoll. Turner votes for George Knoll. Fire Robin votes for George Knoll. Empowers votes for George Knoll.
Congratulations. It's a good group of folks working on Better Property Board. They're very thorough and really work through some difficult situations. The next one is Board of Code Appeals. We have one appointment to be made with a five-year term, ending June 30th, 2024. The candidate is Ted Kerner. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of Ted Kerner? I can. He served for quite some time, and he served on Planning Commission previously. I think he was on when I first began Planning Commission. He's dedicated, has great attendance, and does a good job.
Keen votes for Ted Kerner. Vance votes for Ted Kerner. Luttrell votes for Ted Kerner. Fire Robin votes for Ted Kerner. Empowers votes for Ted Kerner.
Great. Congratulations to him. The next one is Board of Zoning Appeals, and we have two appointments to be made, serving five-year terms, ending 2024. Candidates are John Cartwright and Ted Kerner. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of Ted or John? And I think John currently serves, both of them currently serve, and have been very dedicated with.
Okay, Keen votes for John Cartwright and Ted Kerner. Wait a minute, wait, hold on. Yeah, we've got one ballot here. Pass that back to Lee.
They're on board.
Oh, wrong board, okay. Wait a minute, let's see, which one are we voting on?
We're voting on Board of Zoning Appeals.
The zoning appeals.
I don't have that one.
I don't want. Sorry about that.
Got it. Sorry. Got it. Now I'm ready.
Okay. Okay, I'll start off. Keen votes for Cartwright and Kerner. Powers votes for John Cartwright, Ted Kerner. Turner votes for John Cartwright, Ted Kerner. Luttrell votes for John Cartwright, Ted Kerner. And Fire Robin votes for John Cartwright, Ted Kerner.
Great, thank you. And just a word, this process takes a little while, because it's all transparent, there's no secret ballots, everybody knows who voted for which people, and that's part of the Tennessee laws that we follow. Next is Library Board. We have one appointment, is to fill an unexpired term, ending December 31st, 2020. The candidate is Melissa Mullins. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of Melissa?
Melissa's great. She's young and energetic. She serves on the, I believe, in Bristol Board. She's done a lot of work downtown. She is a great asset, and we need to cultivate our young people.
I'll ditto that as well.
Keen votes for Melissa Mullins. Powers votes for Melissa Mullins. Turner votes for Melissa Mullins. Luttrell votes for Melissa Mullins. And Fire Robin votes for Melissa Mullins.
Great, thank you. Next is Parks and Recreation Board, and we have five appointments to be made to Parks and Recreation Commission, and three of the appointments will be for three-year terms, ending June 30th, 2022, and two appointments will be to fulfill unexpired terms, ending June 30th, 2020, and June 30th, 2021, respectively. So we'll see the highest votes, get the longest terms, and then we'll draw lots if we need to do that afterwards. The candidates are David Aker III, Rhonda Baker, Bennett Cowan, Clyde Downs, Miles Vance, and Sherri Willinger. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
Well, I can say on Clyde Downs, he probably uses our parks more than anyone. I believe every day he is in one of them, somewhere in our city, so I think you'd do a great job on that board.
Okay.
And I'd speak on behalf of Rhonda Baker. She is, has been in our community now for a little over a year. She is just, she's a wonderful person, again, young, could bring a lot of the millennial insight into Parks and Rec, and I think she'd be a great addition.
I think they'll all do a great job. Anyone steps forward to accept a commission, you know they've got their heart in it.
It's a challenge when there's too many people, but it's also a very positive when we have people who are wanting to serve, so we appreciate that. I'll just say Sherri Willinger serves on the Friends of Steel Creek Board, and has brought that liaison ability back and forth, so I'm speaking in favor of her.
Okay, Keen votes for David Aker, Rhonda Baker, Bennett Cowan, Clyde Downs, and Sherri Powers votes for David Aker, Rhonda Baker, Bennett Cowan, Clyde Downs, Sherri Willinger. Turner votes for David Aker, Rhonda Baker, Clyde Downs, Miles Vance, and Sherri Willinger. Luttrell votes for David Aker, Bennett Cowan, Clyde Downs, Miles Vance, and Sherri Willinger. And Fire Robin votes for David Aker, Rhonda Baker, Bennett Cowan, Clyde Downs, and Sherri Willinger. Okay, council, let's get a tab.
I think I might have to do. See, they're all across. So here's the five, that's for sure. We got four. We got five. We got five.
Okay, so we got three fives then, and we've got two fours, so we have to draw lots for this. Okay. See your notes. Okay. David Aker III has received five votes. Clyde Downs has received five votes, and Sherri Willinger has received five votes. Those three individuals will take the full three-year terms for service on a Parks and Recreation Commission. We had two other candidates that received four votes, Rhonda Baker and Bennett Cowan Jr. I think we'll, we can determine that by lot, if you prefer, or we have another set of ballots, if you prefer to do that.
Do y'all care?
Just do the lots.
Just do lots?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to need to remove four of the names. We're going to need to remove four of the names, so we only have two.
Bennett Baker. Ben Cowan. Rhonda Baker. Okay, there we go. Okay. We have two lots to draw. Okay, so I just.
Just draw one out.
Okay. That's it.
Bennett Cowan Jr. will receive the term, ending June 30th, 2021, and Rhonda Baker will receive the term, ending June 30th, 2020.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for figuring all this out. So, all right, next we have Planning Commission, and we have one appointment. It's for three years, till June 30th, 2022. The candidates, we have one position and three candidates, Kevin Buck, Melissa Mullins, and Miles Vance. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
Again, they're all three very strong candidates. Kevin Buck has served on the Planning Commission for some time. He brings an area of expertise as a landscape architect. He works locally with an excavation company. He's very familiar with the nuances that we address in our Planning Commission, and I think he would be a wonderful candidate. Of course, the other two are very strong candidates as well, and we appreciate their application.
Keen votes for Kevin Buck. Powers votes for Kevin Buck. Luttrell votes for Kevin Buck. Turner votes for Kevin Buck. And Fire Robin votes for Kevin Buck.
Great, thank you. Next, we have our Power Board, and we have one appointment to be made this evening to the Power Board. The appointment is for four years, ending June 30th, 2023. And again, we have three candidates for one position. They are Chad Couch, Douglas Harmon, and Gary McGow. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this appointment until we have time to discuss this in more detail in our work session. You have mentioned, as have others, that we need a more developed process, so that we can take a comprehensive look at the BTS Board. We know that we are looking for different skill sets, so that we don't have duplication of skill sets, and so that we don't create a void of skill sets. The past two years have been very contentious in trying to seat someone taking as much as two and three months, and I think we are a better council than that, and I would prefer to not do this, so that we're divided, or it becomes contentious, without having established the process and to have had the conversation in work session. I would like to make a motion that it's tabled until next month.
I'll just check with our city attorney and be sure we're in order to do that.
This is your process, so it would be a motion to defer until next month rather than table.
Yep. So, okay, so that's a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. And any further discussion?
I guess of waiting, I'm not sure, I mean, we've had the, all the applications for some time of, I guess I'm just confused.
We've done this for the past two years, where we We've done this for the past two years where we take the vote tonight and the vote's not clear. We don't have a clear pathway. And then it takes on a sense of contentiousness. And it becomes very political. And there's a lot of calling and talking and this, that, and the other. And I don't think it sets us up well as a council to begin a new era. So in the past, we have, when we could not determine someone at this meeting, we have tabled it. And I think it was September of last year before we seated someone. The year before, it was at least September. The year before that was not as contentious, but the year before that, it was September before we seated someone. And I would like for us to finally establish a conversational process where we take a comprehensive look at the board and the skill sets. There are thousands of dollars that are spent every year in training our Board. It's a very important board. I mean, it's so important. There's a lot of legislation. Our Board members in the past year have been to the APPA Legislative Rally. They've been to the APPA National Conference. They've been to the TV PPA Annual Conference. Most, all of them have gone. They've gained areas of expertise that are very far-reaching. In the past, we have tried to be sure that, you know, we had appropriate skill sets, but it gets lost in the process because we may have duplication of skill sets. And I just think at this point in time, there's been a lot of question about whether or not there's been transparency on the board. I've gone back and talked to several present Board members as well as previous Board members. And I just think we don't do our community a great service when we get to this point. And we vote, everyone has their favorite, and it becomes very split. And we're unable to seat someone. And these people are, they're professional people. And to drag them through the mud, as has happened in the past, I think as a council, we are better than that. And that it is time that we establish a conversational process in our work session to maintain the integrity of this board.
So we'll just have an open seat on the board now since this one is up. There'll just be an open seat.
Right, until we make a determination in August. And we've done it the past two years. So this is not something radical to do.
The last couple of years, just for information that you've got, any Board member that's appointed to a committee or a board has to have three votes. And that was the case last year. And I believe that was the case two years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Two years ago, and then four years ago that was the case. And it carried on for over two, with two months.
We just didn't have somebody that got three votes. So it did carry on. And new candidates came on board.
I'm just asking for the conversation and to establish a process.
My thought is this, is we've got resumes for the candidates right now. All three very good candidates. If we don't have the three votes, then I think we should do that. My thought is, is if we do have, you know, someone clearly with enough votes to do it, my thought is we should probably go ahead and proceed with our vote tonight. I don't know, anybody else have a, but I'm okay to wait. If the majority wants to wait, it's okay with me, too.
I'll just say, most of the time I do phone calls with everybody. I have not been able to do that this time with having visiting family. So I didn't do my homework as well as I like. The other thing that is of interest to me is in our work session, we will decide which one of us serves on BTS Board, which provides skill sets with that. So looking at what is the best combination or whatever. So that would be my interest in saying I think it could be a good idea to wait.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call for the question.
All right. This is to vote on the motion, not on anything else. I guess we're ready to tear up for the roll call. Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Keen?
No.
Powers?
Yes.
All right, so we will have the discussion of Power Board. And we can talk to Mr. Sora individually on what our expectations are from that discussion so we can set it off with whatever materials. And the way that it has been done in the past is if folks continue to be interested, if the candidates who have applied are still interested, they need to be sure and let us know that to.
So let's be clear. So more people can apply for this at this point?
More people presumably.
We'd have to have a motion to do that.
The way we've handled it in the past, if you actually took a vote, then they would have to reapply.
Okay, so we don't have to.
We have not taken a vote. So your slate of candidates that you have now would roll to the time that you do vote. Now, whether, again, this is your process. So if you want to open up, that's your call on that, to open it up for additional candidates. That's your call.
Can we, I mean, of opening, since we did not take a vote and we have the deadline of when the applications had to be in, is that still going to be the deadline for these, it's still going to be these applicants?
So what we're saying is, we didn't take a vote, so these are our applicants. They'll remain our applicants.
But there won't be any more?
It's up to us to decide whether we want to say it's still open.
The only way to be open that is if there was a motion second whose votes are support.
Our attorney is consulting.
Yeah.
Give him just a second.
We're reading your policies. And it depends on how you read your policies. States if no candidate is elected to fill a vacant Board and Commission position, then the appointment shall be deferred to the next regular meeting of City Council. Applicants must resubmit their applications in order to be considered for the position. Now, I think we have historically interpreted that much like the situation we had last year when no one was elected. You haven't actually had an election. But I'm, you know, what are your thoughts?
We actually added this language in January of this year because of what happened last year.
Because of what happened last year?
That's.
We had votes last year, though. We didn't defer action.
Right. But what you decided to do when you revised your policies and procedures was say that somebody would have to resubmit their application. And so since there has not been an election, I think you're probably better off to say that people need to resubmit their applications. And I think that probably opens up the deadline again.
Okay.
So are others committed to open, to apply, or is it only these three?
No. Following what you've laid out in your policies and procedures or what we've laid out in your policies and procedures that you voted on, yes.
All right. Are we clear? And we appreciate everybody's participation with us as we learn.
Okay, so let's make sure. Yeah, let's bring some clarity then. Deferring action until such time, you're going to discuss it at the work session. So and deferring action from tonight. Anyone that's on the current slate, everyone must reapply. And the slate of candidates is open for new interest or new candidates to apply also.
Can you read that one more time, Danielle?
If no candidate is elected to fill a vacant Boards and Commissions position, then the appointment must be, the appointment shall be deferred to the next regular meeting of City Council. Applicants must resubmit their applications in order to be considered for the position.
The way I read that is, and I think we're in the right to be able to table it. But the way I read that is, is that no other, no further, no further candidates could apply at this point. That we're deferring a vote because we have not voted on this at all. So my thought on this is that we defer the current candidates to the next week, excuse me, to the next month.
It would still be because if we left it open, we're going to have met at the end of the month. They have until the 2nd of August to have applications in. And so we're back.
But my thought is, if we did take a vote tonight, then it could have been, it would be opened back up to have more people apply, or whoever apply. Since we are tabling the vote until next month, we should not take any more candidates.
Right.
That's the way I read that.
Yeah, I can't, sorry, Eddie.
I think there's enough ambiguity in how that is written.
Right.
Y'all let us know how you want to do it. It's your process.
I think that they would have to resubmit, though. That's, I mean, that would be, if they're still interested, your candidates are still, because that's the one clear part here is that the, if you are.
Then I would make a motion that we do not open the appointments up to any other candidates, that we deal only with the three candidates that have previously submitted, and that they will be required to resubmit, but only those three would be eligible to submit.
I would second.
That's a motion and a second, so you'd need to have everybody's agreement if that's.
Is there any further discussion on that motion and a second? If not, we're ready to vote. Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Just to clarify, that motion was to, that the candidates that are currently on the table will have to resubmit in order to be considered, but that no one else is allowed to submit.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right.
And we will place this then on the July 30th agenda for your discussion.
Thank you.
Work session agenda.
Thank you very much for, process is sometimes a bother, but it's important. Next, we have Tree Board. We actually have two openings on the Tree Board and one candidate. And that candidate is Karen McSherry. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of Karen McSherry?
Karen's been on the Tree Board. She's awesome. She's just great working in the community.
Keen votes for Karen McSherry. Powers votes for Karen McSherry. Turner votes for Karen McSherry. Luttrell votes for Karen McSherry. And Fire Robin votes for Karen McSherry.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have two ordinances for consideration this evening. The first one is Ordinance 19-5. And this one is to amend the zoning map by designating certain property M2, General Industrial on One Center Drive. And Mr. Sora, would you talk about it a little bit?
Yes, Mayor, we'd be glad to. As you mentioned, this is a proposed rezoning of property located at One Center Drive, probably more commonly known as the Sora. Staff has received a request from the owner to rezone the property from its current zoning designation of B3 General Business to M2 General Industrial District. The uses permitted in the M2 zone include manufacturing and warehousing and several other uses that are more intense than is typically provided in the current B3 zone. The, this matter was, received a staff recommendation to the Bristol Regional Planning Commission at their June 17th meeting. A favorable recommendation is forwarded from the Planning Commission. If the, if this is approved on first reading tonight, then we'll establish a public hearing prior to consideration on second reading at your August 6th meeting. Ms. Young is with us again this evening to further detail the issue for you and provide some overhead pictures of the property.
Thank you. Good evening again. As Mr. Sora stated, this request is to rezone from the B3 General Business District to M2, which is the General Industrial District in the city. This is a location map of the property. You can see in the blue line that this outlines the boundaries of the parcel under review tonight. The purple line on the map is the actual city limit boundary for the city of Bristol. This map shows the zoning of the property and surrounding zoning. So you can see that the blue parcel is indeed surrounded by M2 zoning. The parcels around the rezoning parcel are largely vacant, but they are zoned M2. We've got a couple of drone shots here that show the property. The yellow line on the photo indicates the building that probably most people are familiar with on this site. You have over on the right side of the screen, Highway 421. So this is looking north towards the intersection of Highway 421 and Highway 394. This shifts just a little bit to see the building is on your right side of the screen. And you can see beyond the parcel, some industrial parcels that surround the property in the back. This turns the other direction, so we're looking southbound on Highway 421. This shows the kind of the remainder and the rolling topography of the subject parcel. And here's one other view. You can see down at the very bottom left-hand side of the screen, there is a warehouse building that's also located on this parcel, but a large bit of it is green undeveloped property with the main building up there on the hill on the left side of the screen. This is a, I have two slides that show you a comparison of the uses allowed in each zoning district. So the B3 district is going to allow more of your highway commercial type businesses, retail businesses, banks, business office, funeral homes, dry cleaners, daycares. It does allow single-family and two-family residences. The M2 zone is going to allow all of your manufacturing uses. This lists out a few of those. The difference, one of the differences here is that in the M2 zone, you do not have the single-family or two-family dwelling units. So you have primarily business manufacturing uses. When we took a look at the parcel, we looked at some of the features that it has. It is almost 17 acres. It does front on Highway 421. The building has been utilized for different things in the past, but probably many of us have gone there as a special events facility. There's a large parking lot. And as I showed you in the drone photo, there is a warehouse building located on the site. Given the location of the subject property and the surrounding zoning, that it is entirely surrounded by the M2 zoning, the staff feels that the rezoning request is suitable in this situation. Here's an excerpt from that future land use map that we use. This does show the area in a pink color, which is a commercial zoning. The gray color to the left side of the red circle, it actually indicates industrial. But there are a couple other things that we look at in related to the land use map, and that is the policies that I mentioned in the previous rezoning discussion. So one of the key principles of the future land use map is to secure the city's economic future by strengthening cultural tourism and arts, motorsports, medical arts, healthcare, and diversified manufacturing and destination retail. The policies go on to say that we should sustain existing commercial areas while providing for adequate and compatible growth and expansion. And then a policy number four, which says that we should provide land and infrastructure to sustain and promote industrial growth. So given the observance of these policies included in the future land use plan, given the fact that the parcel is zoned, it's surrounded by the M2 zone, and it's accessible by Highway 421, which is an arterial road that already contains truck traffic. Given the fact that the site is somewhat isolated by the vacant land around it, we, staff feels in our analysis that this rezoning is suitable. The Planning Commission discussed and heard this item during their meeting on June 17th, and they unanimously voted seven to zero to send a favorable recommendation to City Council to rezone this property from B3 to M2, the General Industrial District.
Thank you. Does anyone have, on council, have questions for staff? If not, is there a motion?
Motion for approval of, what ordinance is this?
19-5.
19-5.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Would anybody on council like to discuss this ordinance? If not, is there anyone here tonight who would like to address counsel on it? And seeing no one, I think we're ready to vote. Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Next is the second reading of Ordinance 19-4, amending the zoning map of the city of Bristol by designating property 1101 Anderson as RE, Established Residential Neighborhood. And we've had this summarized during the public hearing. If no one has any further questions, is there a motion?
A motion to approve Ordinance 19-4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? And the public had opportunity during the public hearing. And the public had opportunity during the public hearing for comments, so I think we're ready to vote. Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
All right. At this point, we come to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor, the first item for consideration is the minutes from the June 4th meeting. Second item is the June 25th City Council work session minutes. And resolution 1968, awarding a bid for the purchase of delivered stone and sand. Resolution 1969, awarding a bid for the purchase of stone and sand on a picked-up basis. Resolution 1970, awarding a bid for the purchase of in-place asphalt. Resolution 1971, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk asphalt products. Resolution 1972, awarding bids for the purchase of bulk concrete products. Resolution 1973, authorizing the purchase software support for financial software system. Resolution 1974, awarding bids for the purchase of water and sewer supplies. Resolution 1975, approving an agreement with the YWCA and providing funding support. Resolution 1976, authorizing the purchase of software support for computer-aided dispatch system. Resolution 1977, authorizing an agreement for pharmacy administration services for group health benefits program. Resolution 1978, awarding a bid for ambulance remount. Resolution 1979, authorizing payment to Sullivan County Election Commission. Resolution 1980, approving the transfer of property to the state of Tennessee. Resolution 1981, authorizing entry into an agreement for consulting services with McGill Associates VA.
So on the consent agenda, we put these things together, and if anyone on council wishes to remove an item, we do that at this time. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item for discussion? Seeing none, then a motion would be appropriate.
Motion to approve the consent agenda of July 9th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second, and I think we're ready for voting. Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Great. Now we come to Board of Education Liaison Report, and Jill Harrison, who is Chair of our school board, is here tonight, and we have big things happening with our school system, so thanks for sticking around and being here.
No, thank you very much, and congratulations to our newest members. So you're going to have a double team tonight. The first thing I wanted to do is just do a short report. I know that everyone is aware that Dr. Lilly resigned. He has taken the position with the Collyville School District. In his place, we have appointed Dr. Annette Tudor, which I'll introduce in just a moment. But just to give you a brief report, we have engaged a search firm. The advertisement for the position for the Director of City Schools has been posted in a number of relevant positions that would hopefully attract a number of individuals' interest in the position. We have been advised that we should consider somewhere in the 90 to 120-day frame as probably the timeframe in which we will identify an individual to be named as the new Director of Schools. Depending on the location of that individual and the position in which they serve, it may be an additional time period for them to complete, because obviously, a person of quality that we would like, we would not want them to step away from their position and leave their current employer in a bad situation, so would need time to be able to leave that position. So that's a general timeframe that we have been given. The application will stay open until the last Friday in July, and currently, the resumes are being gathered by the search firm to go through for an initial first draft. So that's a very high-level report on where we are with the Director of School search. And I asked, I said, "Please tell me, do you believe the city of Bristol, our school district, is one in which we will have folks who want to come, that are of quality, have the experience, the leadership, and the knowledge?" And Mr. Qualls unequivocally said, "Oh, yes, absolutely. It is one of the best school districts in the state, not only because of the school district, but because of the Bristol community." So I thought that was great for him to immediately recognize the quality of life here in our area. Second part, I would like to introduce, I know many of you know Dr. Annette Tudor. The board unanimously selected her to serve as our Enem Director. The prior position that she held was our Supervisor of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, which of course is our high school, our middle school. She has been with the school system since 2000, has served in a number of different positions, Special Education Teacher, Assistant Principal at Tennessee High School, and then in her current position. And Dr. Tudor will be here every month, as Dr. Lilly had been while this process is going on. So I just wanted to come and tell you, she has the full support of our board. We are 100% behind her in this position, and hope you'll make her feel welcome as you did, Dr. Lilly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you, council. Congratulations, Mr. Turner, Mr. Luttrell. Obviously, that's a lot going on, just trying to find a replacement for Dr. Lilly, whose shoes are big to fill, but we're working hard at that part, but at the same time, we're keeping things moving along and prepping for the new school year. So just to give you a little update on what we've been accomplishing this summer, we've had a number of elementary summer camps. All of our elementary schools have had Read to Be Ready Summer Reading Camps, so that's a holdover from the grant monies that the previous governor had for Read to Be Ready initiatives. Unfortunately, we think that money may be going away for the future. It's been a great program for our, not only for our students in summer reading opportunities, but they get to take a book home with them, but we've also had a number of professional development opportunities for our teachers throughout the past two school years, so we hope that in some way that'll be, funding will be reinstated at the state level for that. In addition to that, we've had two of our elementary schools who've had STEAM camps, which are Science, Technology, Engineering, the Arts, and Mathematics. So Avoca and Anderson both have had those elementary STEAM camps as opportunities. The other three schools have had open library times, which is an opportunity for students to complete their required summer reading. We've had summer reading requirements in our district for a few years now. It is now a state requirement as well, so we are a little bit ahead of that curve, but all of our students K-12 are responsible for doing some summer reading, so they have opportunities to go to all of our schools, Vance and Tennessee High School included, to have support to work on that, or check those books out of the library and get a jump on that prior to school starting. Very excited about the opportunity for summer meals this past summer. So far, we've served over 10,000 breakfast, lunch, and snacks to our community students up through the age of 18, so anybody who shows up for those meals has that opportunity, and we've had great turnout for that. In addition to that, we have a summer book bus in partnership with the Bristol City Library. Over 250 students have utilized that service in June, which is great. We had, we have two more dates. We actually had one today. Not sure of the numbers that turned out today, but we have one more on July 16th, so we still have opportunities for that. Students on July 16th who show up to that book bus will have the opportunity to take that book home with them and keep it as a part of their home library, so we're pretty proud of that and the partnership with the public library. If you've been by Vance Middle School lately, you can see some visible progress happening now on our construction. The site has been, is underway in preparation. We're also working internally in the gym. That'll be the first phase, is renovating the gym, so you can't really see that progress, but we're certainly moving along and hope that you'll be able to see more visible progress as the months go on. And then finally, just back to school dates, we have our laptop distribution, July 25th, 30th, or 31st, so all of our families are invited to come to Tennessee High School and sort of have an orientation and receive their laptops and backpacks on one of those dates. Teacher-wide in-service is July 29th, where we welcome our teachers back, and our teachers are actually the ones presenting to each other, so it's a teacher-led initiative. And then our teachers return August 1st, and finally, our students will be back August 5th, which was right around the corner, so we are very excited to have them back. Do y'all have any questions for me?
We welcome you, and you have a lot going on, and we want to be supportive and helpful in any way we can, so please call on us as council and city staff for us to do what we can to keep things going.
I appreciate that. Mr. Sora's already been very helpful, so thank you.
That's what we would expect. So before City Manager's Report, I just wanted to do a few recognitions of folks who are with us here tonight. We have several previous mayors. We have Joel Staton in the back with his white peg. We're really pleased to see Jack Young here tonight, and Kelly Graham, who came in, who's also current Chair of our Planning Commission. We also have had County Commissioners David Ackert and Mark Hutton, Dr. Tudor and Jill Harrison, Chair of the School Board, also Eric Cuddy on our school board was here. BTS, we have the Chair Larry Clark. Aaron Downs was also here, and Gary McGow was also here. And Amy Shuttle, we welcome you from Bristol Chamber as well. So hopefully, I covered most everybody who's here tonight, so, Mr. Sora?
Hey, first, I'd like to express my appreciation to staff for their assistance in the Fourth of July celebration. I know Terry Napier and his staff, as well as our public work staff, worked very hard to make that a reality for our downtown community, and then also for City Council in funding that effort also. If you've been on Sixth Street this week, you know that demolition has started and construction will commence tomorrow, so hopefully, we will wrap that project up in short order. Some of you are familiar with the name of Mark Mametoff. He is, I guess, the guru across the state in incentivizing projects, whether you're using pilots, or TIFs, or so forth. He also has served as our Bond Counsel for a number of years. We have invited him to be with council on, at noon on Monday, the 29th. We'll serve, we'll have a light lunch, and as Mark has done for previous councils, he's reviewed the various economic development incentives that are available, basically the tools in the toolbox, and when they're appropriately used, how they're used, and what other communities are doing also in terms of contrasting, in terms of a contrast program. We'll have this in the work, in the bottom area, in the workroom of our, or the education room of our nature center at Steel Creek Park. We also plan to invite our Industrial Development Board to participate in that, as well as our county commissioners. And then also, we have, I want to remind City Council, we've moved our work session from the Fourth Tuesday to the Fifth Tuesday, so that will be on July 30th at 5:30 in the Annex Conference Room. And then lastly, it's been our tradition now, Terry, for what, four or five years, to recognize the mayor, even though you're still going to be the mayor. We, this is something that staff, we recognize the efforts, the time, the energy that's put into the role, and you've certainly served this community well. You've been everywhere that you were supposed to be.
Just about.
But with that, we've chronicled every step of the way through our Department of Community Relations, and as we do like to do, at the end of your first-year term, we like to share this with you.
Thank you so much. I've been jealous when other people, other mayors have received this, because this is a newer event than in the past, so it's fantastic. I'll look forward to going through it. Thank you, thank you. All right. Now, Mr. Sora, that's it?
I'm good.
Okay. Now, our City Council comments, if folks have any comments to make, or dates to share, or any reflections, or whatever.
I guess I'll start that. I'm excited about being here and looking forward to the next four years.
I just feel very privileged to serve on this council and work with everyone here, and I too look very forward to the next four years.
We enjoyed the previous council tremendously. Jack is here tonight and working with Michelle, but we have a new opportunity, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity and for us to work conversationally and kindly and in the boat, rowing together. So it'll be, it'll be a great, great year.
I'd like to also say congratulations to Eric Cuddy. He just got elected on, or just got sworn in, I guess, on our school board, and appreciate, excuse me?
It's sworn in Monday.
Monday? Okay. Good deal. And I want to say thanks to all of our school board members. Someone mentioned to me, and I did not realize this, that our school board members are not paid, and, but they're in an elected position and spend money to get elected, and it's a very important board, and so that's something that I did not know. But thanks to all of our board members, we've got very many, a lot of boards that are very important. I mean, all of our boards are important, but we have certain ones that take a lot of time. School board is one of those, that really takes a lot of time, and our citizens elect that person, so appreciate them. All the things going on in our school system is really exciting. Wanted to also just say thanks to Janet Ross and the work that she has done. Customer service has been a high priority for our, starting with our council, our city manager, and right down to our department heads, and she's a great example of someone that has really, really done an extremely good job, so appreciate all of our employees when they demonstrate that kind of customer service. Thank you.
All right. Usually, I have a long list, but I don't, but also, on the Bristol First Award, I'll also say congratulations to Janet. Also, I'll say thank you and congratulations to our Department of Community Development and Terry Talbert for creating that recognition. I think it's really important. I think it means a lot to our employees. It gives us opportunity up here to see what is being done out in the community, gives us a chance to also brag on our employees and the work that they do. So I think it means a lot. Hopefully, also, the work that we're doing with our budget and trying to be sure our employees get in line with their pay, both cost of living plus raises, as well as in their positions, receiving compensation that's appropriate for their positions, so appreciate that. And also, just comment on budget, we went through a difficult year with budget, which it is almost every year, but long, and it was grueling, and right now, we're watching as Sullivan County goes through it as well, and we do want to support them as they go through their process and hope that they will be able to make good decisions that are very hard when there's a lot of needs, and we're hoping that things work out well. And we're particularly concerned about education in our schools, so we'll be following that and working with our commissioners as much as we can. With that, and with, again, appreciation for the council that we've had, and looking forward to the council coming forward, we'll meet again the end of July, and we hope to see others here a month from now. Thank y'all very much. We're adjourned.